...this evening to be with us. Before we stand for the pledge tonight, I would like to take a moment to have a moment of silence for a couple of individuals who recently passed away. One, which I'm sure those of you have heard, we lost a member of our football team. We partner with Newt and have a cooperative team. And recently, yesterday, a student at Newt High School passed away due to a tragic car accident. His name was Chandler Peterson. Our thoughts and prayers go out to his family. I also got word yesterday that a longtime umpire for the state of New Hampshire, who has done many games here in Farmington, was really one of the leading umpires in the state, Mr. Tom Desatell, passed away. And he was a friend of Farmington as well, did many games here over the years. So if I could have a moment of silence for both Chandler and Tom Desatell, I would appreciate that. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go into public participation, we actually will start off with some better news than what I just had to share. And that is Stan Frieda, a member of our school board here, was recently issued an award. Stan is an Educational Technology Director and Online Learning Specialist with the New Hampshire Department of Education. And recently, help me stand, it's called State Leader of the Year Award, but it's a national award. Can you just tell me just a little bit about that so everyone understands?
Yeah, it was given by the State Educational Technology Directors Association, which is the people who have my position in all 50 states and territories in the country. And they all get together and through nomination, I was nominated and then elected by the board as the state leader of the year.
So you get the state leader of the year though for the nation though, for all 50 states?
Yes.
So I'd like to give a round of applause to congratulate Stan Frieda. I'm proud of you for that. All right. Approval of minutes, no, excuse me, public participation. Do we have anybody from the public who would like to speak tonight? Right now? Okay. Approval of minutes.
I'm going to make a motion to table the minutes. They came in late and I don't know if we've all had a chance to talk about it.
Okay. Due to the fact that we haven't had a chance to review minutes, Mrs. Moore makes a motion to table them at this time. Second by Mr. Frieda, are all those in favor? Aye. Thank you. All right. And before we get into new business, we do have some new business that we were just discussing in non-public. Recently, Mr. Frieda and I negotiated with the parent educator collective bargaining unit on a three-year agreement. We have come to an agreement with them, and they recently ratified it at their most recent meeting. And we discussed some of the details on that agreement in non-public earlier this evening. And I think we're ready to take a vote on that.
A motion to accept the new three-year agreement.
Motion by Mrs. Moore to ratify the new agreement with the parent collective bargaining unit. Second by Mr. Frieda. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Okay. Now, what that means is that both sides have ratified the agreement, but this does have to go before the voters in March. So that will be on the warrant in March, the agreement that we've come to. And I'd like to thank the parent negotiators for a very well-organized and some healthy discussions about what's best for kids during that whole process. So my hat's off to them. And thank you, Stan, for all of your help, and Ruth Ellen and Lori for all your help with that process. Okay, let's get into new business. We have cafe services here. I see food, which is a good thing.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you'd like, I can just give you a brief introduction. This is Chris Farrell. He is Director of Operations. Jeff Lorcross, this is his first year here. And he is our director. And Cara Green, here is our district manager.
Welcome.
Thank you. And thank you for the time. We just wanted to take a few minutes, since this is a new relationship, just to catch up, show you a few things that are going on in the cafeteria where we're headed with some stuff with our initiatives this year, and give you folks an opportunity to ask any questions you may have or give us any feedback on the new program. So you have this full PowerPoint presentation in front of you in a packet. Talks a little bit about the philosophy behind our menus and our methods. And, you know, the menus are really written to try and balance the USDA regulations with things that kids like and really try to be proactive about getting kids to try new things. You probably, when we get into the promotions, you'll see there's some stuff that probably you've never even tried, that we're doing taste testings with. We're trying to get the kids a little more actively involved in learning about new foods. This is all based on a station concept. I don't know if any of you have visited the cafeteria now or previously when we were here, but the high school especially is based on a station concept where we do different stations, pizza, Market Fresh, Deli Express, Signature Cafe every day, which ranges from everything to the standard kid favorites of chicken burgers and cheeseburgers and pizza, up to fresh-made salads, things like pork roast and bibimbap, which we ran recently, and all kinds of stuff. Made-to-order deli sandwiches as well, with lean meats and cheeses, salads that are either -- you're not doing a salad bar here, right?
We do a build-your-own-salad bar.
Okay. Yep. So we do a build-your-own-salad with, built-in with the sandwich concept, so students can get either a made-to-order sandwich or made-to-order salad, as well as the offering grab-and-goes as well?
No.
No? Okay. So what's new and what's to come? New menus and new items. Again, we talked about with the menu philosophy, we're trying to branch kids out into new things. We went so far with this concept that this passed just under a year ago now, last winter. We hired on a new executive chef for Fresh Picks Cafe. His name is Matt Pierce. He's classically trained. His last job before coming to us was with Harvard Dining Services in Cambridge. And Matt has done a really great job of really kind of pushing us outside of our comfort zone, getting some really new and interesting ideas into your food service program. We are introducing new service stations. One of the ones that's coming up, and I believe it's mentioned on these bullet points, is a lunchbox concept, which is a grab-and-go concept. One of the most popular ones that we had when we test marketed this was grapes, pepperoni, cheese, crackers. Another really popular one was actually hummus and tabbouleh with carrots. These are just quick grab-and-go lunches that the kids really like, you know, especially when you get into the middle school level where they want to just get their food and get up. Digital menus you've had for a while, and I'm going to get into a minute in the full capability of that. Digital signage, we haven't put in yet, right? Or no? You are slated to get digital signage in the high school cafeteria this year, where a lot of the features that you can see a little bit of now on our menu website in terms of pictures of the food, nutritional information on the food, upcoming promotions, that'll all be part of your digital signage package, which is all part of Nutrislice. You've had Nutrislice for a couple of years now. It's an online, interactive menu. What I don't know if a lot of you are using is the app for Nutrislice. This was one of the key features that got us working with Nutrislice. There's an app that you, or more importantly, kids can put right on their phone, pull up the day's menu, see pictures of it, descriptions of it, even rate it, whether you're on the website or on the app. You try the bibimbap, you can just pull up your phone and tell us right there whether that's a one star or a five star. So you've got a few slides that go into the details of all the stuff the app can do. But that's one of the messages we really want to get out there is, most people have accessed the online menus, but there's Ultimate App that's got the same functionality, is much more convenient, especially for, like, high school students that may not want to get into line and see what there is. They can just go on their phone and get the whole menu. Wanted to touch a little bit about supporting local businesses and our local purchasing. We gave you some stats on our company and some of the local purchasing we've been doing, such as 24,600 dozen, 295,000 Maine grown eggs, a lot of other details there as well. One of the other things we wanted to introduce with this presentation is the next page, which this report will now be available to your SAU, which gives you a snapshot of local purchasing for this district for the year. So you can see that in the past couple of months that we've been here, we've done $39,000 worth of purchasing within a 500-mile radius. As you drill that down, 1,000 of it was in 250 miles, 125 miles represents 8,500. $29,000 worth of the purchases we've made have been from businesses within a 50-mile radius of Farmington. Okay? So this is new information that our purchasing department is starting to produce. It's going to be available to the SAU every month, and we wanted to kind of give you guys a preview of it as well. Culinary programs coming up and that we've done. As I mentioned, Matt Pierce came onboard. Moroccan chicken, Power Bowls are some of the, chicken and waffles are some of the promos we've run so far this year. This is where you get to jump in, Jeff. What promo do you think has been best received so far?
Moroccan chicken went pretty well. We have a taco ensalada, which is a little twist on the taco salad. We serve it in a crispy corn tortilla shell. We have coming up a Japanese rice bowl. And like Chris said, we like to do Taste-a-Bite beforehand, a couple of days or even a week beforehand, to get kids familiar with what they're going to order. And also an overnight oatmeal is a breakfast item that we came up with. It's made the day before. Blueberry oats and oatmeal and yogurt, which goes pretty well. Our mac and cheese goes great. It's pretty much just your basic mac and cheese with a whole bunch of toppings on you. Ground beef, chicken, bacon bits.
Okay. Yep. Some other ones coming up is, in addition to the Japanese rice bowl, we've got the huli-huli chicken for our winter luau coming up. January's theme is Low &amp; Slow, which is more comfort foods and that kind of stuff. Meatball promotion, all kinds of stuff going on. Along with that, Jeff mentioned the Try-a-Bite program, which is where we introduce some of these foods to the kids, but also the Harvest of the Month program, which this says Vermont, I should have changed it to New Hampshire. One of the things that we're trying to get the word out on is, especially in New Hampshire, is Harvest of the Month. This is a program that was really built up in Vermont, and now New Hampshire does it too. Stacy Perslow out of UNH Cooperative Extension spearheads it for New Hampshire. What it is, is a calendar of every month, local produce that's featured. And not only do we feature it on our menu, but UNH Cooperative Extension has all kinds of materials for the classroom available for it as well. Everything from posters and calendars to actual mini lessons and lesson plans that the school can use to tie education into the cafeteria and, more importantly, into the farmer school movement. So, you know, we've been trying to promote that a little bit more. This year is the first year that Stacy's brought Harvest of the Month statewide in New Hampshire. It was piloted last year. And we're working on trying to get all of our school districts to learn a little bit more about it and get a little more participation in that program.
Can I jump in a little bit further?
Sure.
So as far as the promotions?
Could you go to the mic? Just a little closer to the mic.
Sorry.
It doesn't pick up on the tape otherwise.
Okay. So as far as the promotions, I just wanted to mention as well that we really, really love the school's involvement as much as possible. So the Hawaiian luau that's coming up, it would be great to be able to pull something together school-wide. So if you or your teachers or anyone has something that's coming up that we want to tie a menu into, it's really amazing to pull the kids into, and they can participate with recipes and stuff, too.
One of the greatest examples of that is every February or March, I forget off the top of my head, we do a Dr. Seuss promo, which features two weeks of Dr. Seuss-themed menus that we have available that a lot of teachers have tied into the classrooms as well. So already kind of touched on some of the stuff coming up, and that's really about the end of my presentation. At this point, I wanted to open it up to any questions, feedback. Hopefully, you're happy with the new program, but that's what we're here to find out.
Questions from the board? Comments?
I've been eating cafe services for years now, so.
Thank you.
She works in Barrington.
I work in Barrington.
Anything? No?
I will say that even though it's a new relationship this year, it's based on the fact that we had a previous relationship.
Right.
And I will say, on behalf of myself, I'm glad that this relationship is back.
So.
I recently was in the high school kitchen just the other night. I had to go in there. I'm going to be, we'll be talking about that. I'm going to be doing something on Thanksgiving Day in there. It was so well-organized and so clean. And I can't say that the last year that it was up to my expectations, but you can tell a lot about a kitchen, the way that it's organized and the cleanliness of it, and it was fantastic.
Thank you.
And I was very happy to see that. So thank you.
Great.
Anybody else have any questions for them, or no?
I've gotten good feedback from the kids.
Great. Good. That's what I like to hear.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome. And, you know, if there are ever any questions, concerns, anything we can help with, you know, that is a part of the service we provide. That's what we're here for. Jeff is your person who's on-site every day, who really oversees the program. He directly reports to Cara, who really helps him, you know, manage all aspects of the program, from the financial to the operational, that kind of stuff. Myself, I work with both Cara and Jeff in that capacity, but also too, to help school districts with any new initiatives they want to take on, any of that kind of stuff, because I help coordinate the other resources we have. Matt Pierce, who I mentioned, who's the executive chef, who can come in and help with trainings or special events, all of that kind of stuff. Frank Gillespie, who's our registered dietitian, can come in and help with wellness fairs. He works with nurses if there are really severe special dietary concerns, any of that kind of stuff. We have a whole host of support staff that's here if you ever need to go any further with anything, or if you have any issues with anything.
Excellent.
Great. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you. And the cookies are delicious.
I would say thank you.
No, they haven't been that way up for you.
I think we need to pass the case this time.
Let's not be stingy.
You should hear a seventh grade say bing bao bow over the intercom.
All right. We're up to warrant articles.
So you have a version in your drive, but I'm going to give you an updated version here. So what you have for warrant articles, these are draft, but this is more or less what it would look like completed. The first two are electing officers, disclosing auditors' reports. Those are fairly standard. The operating budget that you have there is based on the proposed budget that I am bringing forward. If there are any changes, obviously, those will shift as well. Article four is around the paraprofessionals contract that you just ratified. Article five is in the event that article four does not pass, to conduct a special meeting. Article six, lease purchase of the two buses that we have spoken about previously. Article seven, I've looked at, rather than raising and appropriating the monies for that van in the general operating budget, to withdraw those funds, to request withdrawing those funds from the general operating budget. If you notice both, not, excuse me, the capital reserve fund for buses. If you notice, both article six and article seven have a clause in there that should they pass, general operating budget will be reduced by the amount of budgeted repairs for the older vehicles. So article six would be reducing the general operating budget by $17,000. Article seven would be reducing the operating budget by $5,000. One article that is still probably most in flux is article eight. Right now, that is the article that deals with the technology piece that I'm looking to pull out of the general operating budget to put into the technology capital reserve fund. We are still waiting to get word back as to whether or not a lease can be paid from the capital reserve fund, or if it has to be an outright purchase. In the event that it can be done as a lease, then I would look at the first year of the lease payment to come completely from the reserve fund with no tax impact this year, and then the subsequent years would be divided between the reserve fund and taxation. In the event that we cannot do it as a lease, I would then look to withdraw the same dollar figure and purchase as many units as I could with that dollar figure, and then it would have to be a phase-in over the next few years. So the amount would remain the same as far as the withdrawal from that account, but what would change would be whether or not it's a lease or an outright purchase. And I'm hoping to get that back in the next week or so, so that we have that soon. The next article, nine, resurfacing the tennis courts, that had previously been in the general operating budget, we've pulled that out. And there are a few pieces here that this one and the next, oh, actually, no. Okay, this one and articles 11 would both come from the school equipment fund. No, I take that back. Outdoor facilities for the tennis courts, I apologize. That would be for an amount of $4,000, but that's been removed from the operating budget. The security system upgrade would be from the technology fund, as would article eight. But article 10 is a separate article because it's a separate purpose. In the past, way back, there were some articles that, any withdrawal from that fund, things were kind of lumped together. We've separated them out to make sure that the purpose is very clear, what is coming out for this dollar amount from this capital reserve fund. For article 11, it's the purchase for weight room equipment. Again, having taken that from the general operating fund to put into the school equipment fund capital reserve. Article 12 is purchasing the sound system for the community gym at Henry Wilson Memorial. And article 13 is to establish a new capital reserve fund for kitchen equipment. We have some large purchases that may be on our horizon in the next year or two, as we've had very little equipment replacement in the past several years, and wanting to begin that fund with $7,500 that would be put in from unexpended fund balance at the end of the year. So again, no taxation from that. Then articles 14 and 15 are to ask to appoint the Farmington School Board as agents to expend from the bus capital reserve and from the outdoor athletic facilities fund.
The only question I have is on article eight. The line where it says providing one-on-one technology equipment for students, I think it almost implies that this purchase would make it one-on-one.
If we were to do the lease at the high school, it would make it one-to-one.
On the first year, though?
Yes, because the lease means that we get all of the equipment the first year, we're just paying on it for three.
Okay.
So yes, it would do that.
And it would only be for the high school?
It would be one-to-one for the high school, and it would be upgrading the carts for the other two schools.
Okay, if that is.
If we can't do the lease, obviously, the money's not going to go quite as far, and we're going to have to get a little bit more creative.
Great.
I mean, this is a draft, so I feel.
This is a draft. Yeah, this isn't for, this is for informational purposes to kind of give you where we're going and what's come out of the general operating budget, so that as you look at that piece, you know where they went.
Okay. You'd be voting on this later.
We're not looking for a vote yet, because we still have a couple pieces there that are fluid.
Okay. Taking a look at potentially approving the proposed budget.
I do have some information, too, that will, that's changing the bottom line of what you have there. And if you look at your drive, there is a worksheet entitled Budget Reductions by Cuts or Warrants, 1120. And so what you had seen back at my first overview of the budget had a bottom line for the proposed budget, less special revenues of $14,969. We've gotten our information about our health insurance premiums. We had budgeted a 3% increase. We are actually receiving a 1% decrease. So we have taken that amount out from the general operating budget. We've also reduced that from the default budget moving forward. And then other items that were in the proposed, line 50 was where the Chromebook lease purchase for, I'll go back a little bit more here, just lost, there, okay. Line 50 and line 106 were the Chromebook lease purchases for Valley View and the high school. The Phase 1 of the weight room equipment had been in there, resurfacing the tennis courts and the van replacement. So those are all taken out. As well as looking at that lease, if we are able to do the lease or the purchase with the withdrawal from the capital reserve fund, I would also take out the $27,500 that is budgeted in technology for the replacement of a single cart. We're going to be able to do much more with the Chromebooks for a greater number. And then the last reduction there, we got word this afternoon that Farmington is one of three towns in the state that was awarded the grant for the Acronyms COPS. It's the community policing grant, and it had been proposed for the resource officer for Farmington. There are different purposes for which they're written. Ours was written specifically for the resource officer. So it does mean that we will be seeing some refund or reduction in our costs this year, and then we would see a reduction next year. So next year's grant reduces by 50% what we would need to have in there. So we had reduced our general operating budget and our default budget by the amount, by the 50% on the grant, so that both of those come down. So we're looking at a new bottom line of $14,787,765, which is down more than $100,000 from what you last saw.
Nice.
And at current, that would make our estimated tax impact at about 47 cents. The default budget is at 55 cents.
Do we have any, you know, we've had a couple of workshops and meetings to go over budget here from the department heads and building administrators. Any particular areas you want to visit, talk about? Was Mrs. Peabody here with anything to update the athletic piece? Or, I remember we asked you to do something, but it wasn't going to really affect any.
It doesn't affect the budget. He just does information on how much approximately each team spends.
Right. So we can have that at some, did we get that?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe it's in here.
It's just something, that's just for informational purposes. That's not going to change any numbers.
I didn't know if you needed that to make this decision or not. It was.
Oh, I don't think so.
Okay. Okay.
I think it was more so that we could get an accurate picture of where things lie. I may have to go back. Mrs. Cardinal had indicated that she wanted to phone in on this, to vote on this, but I haven't heard back from her. So I don't know if she's traveling. I don't know if she's still in the air and just can't...
She might not have anticipated we would be at this point in this part of the night.
I, she had asked if I would, you know, let her know when we were going to be doing it, so I have a feeling that she's being, traveling as it is, might have, she just might not be in a place where she can talk with us right now, so.
Do you want to go on to other? And is there any other? And just come back to that? So if she gets to a place...
I don't think we really have much for other. It was more a matter of making sure that we were...
Yeah, I, knowing everything that was voted on last year for warrants, where we are with this budget, I think you guys did a great job.
Thank you.
Me too. I think we should just make the motion.
I'll make the motion to accept the 2018 Farmington School District warrants. Budget, budget, sorry.
Operating budget as proposed.
So if we're going to read into the record?
Yep.
These are your numbers.
Do you want me to read all of the special revenue as well?
Yes.
Because we're adopting that as well.
You definitely want to adopt special revenues, please.
Special revenue in the amount of $1,641,632, for a total of $16,429,397. Total current year is $16,217,471. The difference is $211,926. The estimated tax rate would be 47 cents. Any more?
I think that comes...
Yeah.
Do you want us to pass that down to you?
Yeah, okay.
Is it about the default, or are we going to wait for the default?
I think you, you do two separate motions.
Right, but I'm going to say...
Oh, yeah. I'll send you down my sheet.
Motion by Mrs. Moore to adopt the operating budget as proposed and the special revenue as proposed. Second by Mr. Frida, discussion. Any non, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Maybe I'll just read the next one.
The bottom box, the default budget on the bottom box on the left.
I can do that. Okay. The default budget is as follows.
You're making a motion to accept the default budget.
Which I am moving to accept. So I move to accept the default budget, which will be as follows. The general fund is $14,823,86. A special revenue amount of $1,641,000 and $632,000. For a total of $16,464,718.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Moore. Any discussion on the default?
Did you want to read the tax impact into that?
Yeah, I wanted to, what was, the, the difference between the proposed and the default budget is $247,247, which is a tax increase of 55 cents.
Now, I have a second. Any discussion on the default proposal? Any non, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Okay.
Kelly's got one.
Oh, she has one. Okay. Thank you to all the building administrators and department heads. It's not easy to start budget season on probably September 1st or thereabouts.
Start the discussion in August, I think.
But it's been a very organized and conscientious effort, and I think a very responsible budget that we're sending forward. So thank you to all involved. Any other for the board? Any old business or anything? No? All right. Our next meeting is Monday, December 4th at 6:30 right here. Thank you to those of you who viewed in from home, those of you that came out for this evening. I will mention this, Orange and Black Friday, this Friday, 6:00 PM, we're bringing back the alumni game, basketball game, which hasn't been around for like 20 years. So we'll be happy to be doing that. Come on out and support not only your local varsity teams, but your Tigers of the past. So I will entertain a motion to go into non-public two under RSA 91A colon 32A, B, and C for nominations and resignations. So moved by Ms. McElhenney, second by Mr. Frida. All those in favor, I roll. Aye. Good night.
Thank you.